Property, I'm involved in a timber sale for him. So I will abstain and turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Shoemaker.
Okay, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And I apologize in advance for my winter time blues here. So before we open public hearing, does the commission have any questions for the applicant? Or Nikki, does the applicant have anything in advance of the public hearing?
I actually have some things for the planning commission. And I just wanted to update this to you. When this case was introduced in December, we knew that we would be receiving a recommendation from Cityscape. We did receive that, and it is a recommendation of approval. Susan Raybold with Cityscape, who's the consultant for our county, is here with us this evening to discuss that if there are any questions. We also have Lori Schweller, who is with Williams Mullen, and she is here on behalf of Verizon Wireless, our applicant. If you would look at the conditions that are attached to this request. We'll start with condition number three. Ms. Schweller had offered an email to change some of the conditions. And after consulting with our legal counsel, our county attorney, along with our consultant, Cityscape, we have been able to strike condition three from the special use permit. Condition three indicates prior to permitting, the applicant shall submit a signed letter stating that the tower will be designed with breakpoint technology to have a fall radius of 40 feet or less. In our Cityscape letter of recommendation, on page four, there is a paragraph that actually answers this breakpoint technology. The county code requires a 110% setback for a 199-foot structure, which equates to a 219-foot minimum spacing from the tower location to the property lines. The applicant is showing 250 feet to the center of Petersville Church Road and 480 feet to the property line to the northeast, which are the closest property lines to the proposed new tower. Thus, the proposal meets this county setback requirement without employing breakpoint technology. This is something that is evaluated by Cityscape for every tower that an applicant that submits a special use permit. Now, if we move forward through the conditions to 11 and 14. There has been an update to the construction and commencement requirements through the state code of Virginia. With that being said, the number 14 would change to be this permit shall become void if not commenced and diligently pursued within two years. Thus, changing the verbiage that we currently have, which is the construction of the tower must be complete within two years from the date of approval, or this permit will be null and void. The commencement and diligently pursuing activities matches the requirements of the state code. And Ms. Schweller, on behalf of the agent Verizon Wireless, does agree to that change as well. With that being said, that also negates the reason to have condition 11, which states if the building permit is not obtained within six months from the date of approval, then the special use permit shall be null and void. We now can negate that and strike that condition from the special use permit.
So, Ms. Chairman, Ms. Edmondson, let's go back to 14 again. And you're saying that basically you're changing 14 to say all they have to do really is diligently pursue the construction, but not necessarily start the construction?
I'm going to read the state code and the requirement from the state code, and that may help clarify this information. So state law requires the locality to give the applicant at least two years to commence construction before the SUP expires. In the state code, which is 15.2-2316.4:2, it states, "A locality may require that construction of the approved project shall commence within two years of final approval and be diligently pursued to completion." That's per the state code, and that's what we need to recognize when we are implementing our conditions to the applicant.
Okay, so what we would change that to is they have to at least start it within two years with the intention of fully completing it?
That's correct.
Is there anything in the state code, or does it give the county any ability to say when it has to be completed?
I'm not aware. That would be a question for Mr. Wright, our county attorney. I do know that after, this may have nothing to do with this, it may be an offering of too much information, but after the COVID crisis and the statuses, the things that were held up, offices that were closed, it was, help me here, it was not a government shutdown, but it was a disaster of sorts, an emergency situation. That did impose different restrictions and hardships on businesses as they were attempting to construct anything from a cell tower to a home. So we did understand during that period that the commencement and diligently pursuing. I am sure that as all applicants for building permits, they are constantly in contact with myself and the building inspector, letting us know the status updates if they're able to receive material. So diligently pursuing would mean that we would have conversations with the applicant for the construction of this tower.
Ms. Chairman, the only concern I have is it opens the rear door in this thing. I mean, it could hang out there for years. Just diligently pursuing, there's no real definition to a time period. This here suggests that we had to have something complete within two years of the approval. And I don't think we can buck up against state code. State code allows them one thing, I'm certain that we have to do the same thing. It just, I just would like to know whether or not there's any ability for us to put a time limit after they begin, after they commence, whether the county has the ability to put some sort of a reasonable time limit on the completion of this thing so that it doesn't hang out there, you know, incomplete for a lot of years. I'm saying they probably wouldn't.
Well, may I add, historically, what has happened, you could amend this permit to include typically if there's an issue, other applicants have come forward and said, "I'm not going to be able to meet this two-year deadline. I'm going to ask you to take this ultimately to the Board of Supervisors and ask for an extension." That would be at the discretion of the Board of Supervisors. At that point, they would have exhibited diligent pursuit of the construction, the commencement of the construction of the tower. So it would come back before the Board of Supervisors, and that could be something that you could put in the condition, you know, for them to have a possible extension granted by the Board of Supervisors after evaluation by administration. That could be an offering. I see Mr. Wright. He's going to save me here with a better legal definition.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Edmondson, is that all that you had?
That is all that I have. Thank you so much.
Are there any other questions for the applicant by the commission? Seeing none, Ms. Edmondson will open public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up?
We do. We have four individuals signed up. We actually have Lori Schweller. She is first. She is here on behalf of the applicant. So she does have a presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Lori Schweller, attorney with Williams Mullen, representing Verizon Wireless. I have a presentation I'm happy to walk through if you would like detailed information about the application.
Okay.
Okay. If you all see the presentation on your screen.
I'll drive it for you.
All right. Thank you. Can you all see the presentation? Okay. Thank you. So here you see the location of the site on Trent Mill Road. You can see it's near the intersection with Petersville Church Road. This property is owned by Ms. Large, who's here tonight with her grandchildren. And this is the tax map parcel outlined in yellow, number 9946. The star is the location of the proposed site. And this is showing you the distance to the various boundary lines and the distance to the closest residence in the area, which is over 1,100 feet. So it does meet all the county setbacks. And this is a closer look at the lease area and compound. It's a pretty standard Verizon Wireless compound. The lease area is pretty small, 60 by 60 feet. And within that is a fenced 40 by 40-foot compound. And you can see an illustrative vegetative buffer, which must be at least 10 feet wide around the ground equipment. And there's the landscaping plan, which will be fully detailed there in the top-left corner. This is a schematic elevation of the pole itself. It's a monopole design. It would be galvanized steel. All the equipment on top would be galvanized steel. It would have room for at least six antenna arrays, which is required by our zoning ordinance. So that gives other carriers the opportunity to co-locate, which limits the number of wireless facilities in the county. No lights are required because the total height is under 200 feet, 199 in total with a four-foot lightning rod. Verizon Wireless was looking for a new site within a one-mile radius. And this exhibit here is showing you in yellow the one-mile radius and then an extended one-and-a-half-mile radius. And the purpose of that is to explain that there are no other support structures, no other towers in this area that could have been used for co-locating by Verizon Wireless, which is why a new wireless facility is needed. The closest towers found were 3.2 miles to the northwest and 4.3 miles to the west, which those distances are much too far to serve this area. In fact, you'll find that towers tend to be three to four miles apart. So those are basically in another coverage area. There's also a transmission tower that's only .8 miles to the east, but those are not tall enough to provide the necessary coverage. Verizon also looked at county-owned properties because that's higher in the hierarchy, but those were not close enough either for providing the necessary service. We noted that, and the application is over nine miles away, but I believe Cityscape noted that actually there's a county-owned property around four miles away. So we did conduct a balloon test in November to analyze the potential visibility of the site, and these markers tell you where those photographs were taken. And we can just run through those to give you a sense of how that will look. So as you're coming from the west on Trent Mill Road, you can start to see the site about a mile out, but as you get much closer, the land around you is a higher elevation. So when you get close to the homes in that area, it's over the land as seen here. This is from Trent Mill Road. And then if you go around the curve of Trent Mill Road to the south, it's not very visible from that location at all. I was at the site, and I was able to see it from a couple of addresses along that road, but beyond that, it wasn't visible. This is right at the site. As you can see, the access road there from Petersville Church Road and a simulation of the pole there. You drive north on Petersville Church Road. It's a very forested area, so it's not going to be visible except pretty close to the site when it starts to open up in some fields, as you can see from these photos. So just a quick summary, traveling east on Trent Mill Road, it's visible about a mile away, but as you get closer, the horizon rises, so it's not quite as visible. There's no visibility on Petersville Church Road until you're about half a mile north of the site, but again, you know, not a lot of residences in that direction. And then visibility goes away as you go south on Trent Mill because of trees and topography, though it was visible from a couple of residences on that road. And there's the summary in the 1,000-foot radius as required by the zoning ordinance. So we do believe that the project supports the county's goals and objectives in the comprehensive plan. The plan recognizes wireless communications as essential for the well-being of the county's population and for the community's social and economic growth and development. And these are some of the ways that it serves those purposes. It provides necessary law enforcement, emergency, medical services, educational institution, governmental and community services, communications. It's also necessary to facilitate the growth of new industries and business and to support the development of and sustainability of existing services and local businesses. We also believe that this project complies with your zoning ordinance. There are no other co-location opportunities within the area to be served. It exceeds minimum setbacks. It's neutral color, monopole design, no lighting, and it would provide a co-location opportunity for other wireless providers. Ms. Edmondson has already talked through the questions we had about the conditions, and the applicant is fully in agreement with all of the conditions as amended by that discussion. I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Chairman, do you actually want to take two years to start this thing?
We like to have the maximum time permitted by law, but we typically don't bring a site to the locality for zoning unless we know that it will be in an upcoming build plan. But Verizon Wireless, being a large company, and those priorities change all the time, we like to have that two years to commence.
Second question, I noticed there were some power lines in the area. Are there county regulations that dictate setbacks from power lines? I mean, you're probably far enough away.
To my knowledge, they're not. I've never seen any in any locality.
Are you anywhere near the overhead wires?
The wires themselves? I'm not sure about that. We know we're .8 mile away from the closest tower, but those are pretty short.
Ms. Edmondson confirmed there's no setback to power lines. The information I have about the distance to the closest tower was when we were looking at co-location opportunities, and we saw a .8 mile.
That's to another tower.
To a tower.
Yeah, I'm interested in finding.
The lines themselves?
Yeah, I don't know that there's any danger there, but I'm wondering. It's a long distance? Okay, thank you. All right.
Further questions from the commission? All right. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Edmondson, are there additional speakers for the public hearing?
Yes, the next speaker would be Gay Large and Frankie Large.
Large?
Okay, thank you.
No problem. We also have Clayton Large, but thank you very much. And then the next individual, last individual signed up is Susan Raybold, and she is with Cityscape Consultants.
Does anyone have any questions for Susan? Thank you. That is all that's signed up. We will close the public hearing and turn it back over to commission discussion.
I make a motion that we move this case on to the Board of Supervisors.
Second?
I have a motion by Commissioner Cruz and a second by Mr. Kapaczynski. All in favor, please raise your hand and affirm for Nikki.
Commissioner Kapaczynski, yes.
Commissioner Cruz, yes.
Bickford, abstain.
Shoemaker, yes.
Gooden, yes.
Davis, yes.
Thank you, and I will turn the meeting back over to Chairman Bickford.
Thank you, Ashley, for taking care of that. I see at this time we don't have any new business, Nikki.
We don't have any new business, but before we jump into the bylaws, I did want to, I put the meeting schedule in the packet one more time because we do have some changes. In April specifically, we have a work session on April the 15th. This is actually going to end up being the Board of Supervisors' public hearing for the budget. So you have the ability to move that date to another day that week possibly if we want to try to stay on course with the comprehensive plan revision. And then also, on Monday, April 22nd, the board will reconvene, the Board of Supervisors will reconvene to vote on that budget. Generally, in the past, we have been able to start our meeting before 7:00 PM. It's a very quick Board of Supervisors meeting that day. Offering that to you because...
Okay. My thinking is we've got a work session coming up in February and March, and maybe we can see what kind of progress we've made. And it might make more sense to try to schedule from that standpoint, if that's all right with the commissioners. I think that makes sense. Before we get into, let's say, I guess, Nikki, before we get into commission matters, you have your reports.
Building permit report was there for your reference. I have nothing further. I do have one more date on the calendar, and that was in December, Monday, December 23rd. This past December, the commission voted to move everything into the prior, which was the work session, and not hold a work session, only hold a meeting. In December of this year, Monday is the 23rd, Tuesday is the 24th, and Wednesday is the 25th, which represents Christmas week. I don't know that we will be open on the 23rd, and that could be very optimistic on my part, and I'll be completely wrong, but I do recognize that you all have potentially other obligations during this time. So no decisions need to be made, but I am just pointing those out.
Okay.
Think about as the year goes on.
Duly noted.
Yes, sir.
All right, before we get into the discussion on the bylaws, I would like to acknowledge that we have a new supervisor with us here, Dennis Dave, District One, saying he's the new supervisor liaison for the commission. We look forward to working with you, and I will give you a minute if you have anything you want to say.
No, I kind of got thrown in my lap, but we're good.
All right, we'll do that then. We'll turn it over to commission matters. And Nikki, I'll let you introduce the bylaws. And tonight, we have, Joyce had gotten conflict of interest form, or I guess, policy and conduct. However, there is one statement missing, and that was a sort of a confusion that Pete had come up with a general statement that sort of addressed things too. So let's start with the bylaws, and we'll discuss them. I'm not opposed if everybody wants to take a little closer look at this stuff because Pete, his suggestion didn't make it into the package. We can go over the bylaws real quick and then maybe postpone a vote until next meeting if you choose to. I'm going to just throw that out there for the commissioners. But Nikki, I'll let you go ahead with the introduction of the bylaws.
Our bylaws this year, the proposal for 2024, were included in your packet. The other set of bylaws is what was presented in December of 2022 and January of 2023. They don't indicate some of the changes that were made. There was one change made last year, and that was to move the meeting time from 7:00 PM to 6:00 PM. The bylaws for, proposed bylaws for 2024 more accurately represent the officers and the selection. It does indicate the electronic methods by which meetings may be held. It also indicates the time period of 6:00 PM for all of our meetings and work sessions as well. But it truly is more of a cleanup of the election process and how the chairman and the vice chairman terms are, well, their appointments are considered and how they're voted on here. Did you want me to read all of the...
No, I don't think that's necessary. I would just say the commissioners that have one of the conditions that may want to change or whatever, I would open it up to the floor for discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, the only thing I'd say, let me ask Ms. Edmondson this question. The document that was included that was dated January 22, January 2022, is that the 2024 bylaw? I mean, that's the only document I saw, so I don't...
There were two in there. The last revision date for 2022, this is just the proposal with some cleanup here. The other one had a revision date of 2017, and that was what was presented for last year for 2023. This is just the rough draft for them prior to any changes.
So this 2022 is not our official bylaw yet. It's the 2017?
That's correct.
Got it.
And it should have a revision of 2023, but these are the rough draft that was presented in December 2022 and early January before the changes were made.
Okay.
So I gave you the roughest drafts possible.
Yeah, that's fine. No, no, I went through it. It's fine. You know, I just wanted to clarify it. And I think you made mention that there's on 2.1, there's a typo, but that's coming off, right?
It has the term listed at the very end, and that is hanging out there for no reason. That is indeed an error.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners?
I have a question.
Yes, Charles.
Ashwin, excuse me. And it says that consists of five, not less than five, no more than 15. I'm just curious, why would we have 15?
Well, I'm assuming that that goes back before my time because I don't remember being other than eight on there. That might be a question that Ian could answer.
That's probably a better question for a legal counsel. The bylaws that were adopted, gosh, I can't remember now, to be honest with you, but they've been here for decades, and this is something that's been there in...
I assume it's state code. I'm assuming it would go with state.
I would have to defer and say that it more accurately reflects the state code.
I think, if I could speak, Mr. Chairman, I think that was put into bylaws because of some counties have such a population that they have to, each board member has the opportunity to put two people on it, condition, instead of one.
That certainly would make sense.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Chairman, I have one other question with regard to proceed through this thing. I'd like to talk a little bit about the minutes. Am I jumping ahead too fast?
Right ahead, Pete.
What I would like to see happen, and I don't know how we do this, I don't even know if it's legal, maybe Mr. Wright would have to comment on this, but with regard to our minutes, in order to ensure the clarity of what's presented in the printed minutes, I would like to add as a permanent record, as long as those minutes are kept, the videos that go along with them. So instead of saying we're going to record our minutes, you know, on a piece of paper, I think it should state that we're recording our minutes, but we're also adding to that record the video of these meetings. Is that something we'd like to discuss here?
I'll put it in front of the commission. I do understand your concern, as we've discussed, is that the translation, sometimes you do have some errors from the video to the minutes. And when we vote for the minutes, we're approving as presented, and there may be some mistakes there. Hopefully, nonsole material that it changes, you know, the application or the vote on the application, but it's certainly a concern that probably ought to be at least talked about a little bit.
The concern I am, Mr. Chairman, is, and again, I think the minutes are a legal document, I think. Those records are a legal document. So when you raise your hand and say, "I agree," they're accurate, what you're attesting to is a legal document. I have some concern because I don't believe, unless Mr. Wright can explain this to us, if there was some leeway in that, like to a knowledge statement or something, and I don't even know that that would qualify because a knowledge statement is pretty specific too. But I would suggest that there has to be something that would allow us some room in the event that there are some things that are either erroneously recorded by virtue of whatever, you know, maybe not heard well during the video. Something's got to back up those records, or we're all going to be sitting here reading word for word what that video shows and making sure that our votes are accurate.
Mr. Wright, could you come and address that if you have a minute, sir?
Well, there's a possibility in the written minutes that they don't exactly record what was accurately or actually said during the meeting. So in our approval of those minutes, we're saying we believe they're accurate, okay? And I'm concerned about the fact that we're approving a legal document... And I'm concerned about the fact that we're approving a legal document when, in fact, it may not be accurate or complete.
The process you go through is, the minutes are presented to you. Adopt those minutes as the record of your meeting, and those are the minutes that control. The minutes are never intended to be a verbatim transaction of what all was spoken. So the important part is that the action was taken is, should be, in other words, if we send you minutes in the package, and you think there's an error with the action that was taken, you should correct that before you adopt those minutes.
So it's basically the action, not necessarily the verbiage that went in front of it?
Right. Now, that lends some language, but you know, a lot of that, you know, I came along when we didn't have videos, and we didn't have recorders, and those types of things. So we've just added to the, I won't say complication, but make sure the action is right. Now, it does become important, particularly in some cases, that it leaves what was said is supportive of the action that was taken. And in the zoning cases particularly, there's got to be, the record's got to be complete. Most of that has other documents as well as what was said. But it's the action that really what you want to do. I would encourage you always to be careful with your motions, because it's, that's what you're, that's what you're acting on. And we've all seen situations where there's been a lot of discussion, and you get down and say, "Well, I moved that." I moved that, we do that. But you don't say what you want to do. And you're assuming in your mind it was what was said earlier or somewhere in that discussion, but the person taking those notes has got to decide really what you meant. So I encourage you to do things, be careful with your motions, make sure you state what you really want to do, rather than "do that" or something words like that. And then when those minutes get approved, I mean, when they're set to you, take a look at the actions and make sure emotions actually reflect what you want to do. So we had a situation too, and we're working on the other side of the table too, to get the minutes a little clearer. There was a situation, I'll just be blunt about it. Mr. Bigfoot disqualified himself in a particular discussion. But he, when it came to take the vote, the minutes recorded that the vote was unanimous. And that's true. The vote was unanimous among those that were voting, but those ambiguities in the minutes could potentially create a problem. Okay, so, does that help with you?
Very helpful, thank you.
Any other questions?
For Mr. Chairman, in regard to that comment, I'm okay with using the written minutes and approving them with regard to the actions and the general consensus of the statement that's prior to that action.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Ms. Gooden?
I have a couple other questions.
Mine was related to that, if you... One thing I would like to see is that the vote is recorded, not just seven in favor, one abstaining, or one. I'd like to see, and I know it's specifically who voted for and against. I know that is possible in the board meeting minutes, because they use this system. So I don't know how complicated that is for you to record, or if we do like we did tonight, where we verbally say it for the minutes, but even if that is recorded as a result.
The staff will do everything we can to work with the IT Director to see potential to utilizing the system that's here, just like the Board does. Otherwise, we will do a vote by name. I do understand that, because then you have an official record of who voted and how, and who abstained separately versus as one large vote. Yes, we can put all efforts toward capturing that in a better...
Chairman, do we need to add that to the bylaws? Because I think it's a good idea, actually.
It would probably need to be, but let's see if we have any other changes first, and then maybe we can combine them to simplify things. Joyce, you had several things?
Yes, yes, I did. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under 2-2, and one of the things, it says that any member may be removed by the Board of Supervisors for malfeasance. Not sure what that is. And then that provision that was in there about a member being absent from any three consecutive meetings, I didn't see that anywhere else in the, in that. Are we in the bylaws? It was previously stated, and I want to know what malfeasance says. And it says that we serve at the terms, we serve at the pleasure of the Board of Supervisors. Does that mean our term can be shortened by the Board of Supervisors? So I just question what it means. Please, our term.
I'll probably have to call on Mr. Wright again to try to explain these things. I'll tell you what we do. Let's get a list, and then get him, bring him in at one time and get him to answer questions. Maybe that'd be the cleanest way to do this. But make sure you note those two, please.
Oh, I got it noted, but I didn't make a list this time.
Well, we've got three things now, so...
Thank you, Ian.
Did you want to answer now, Mr. Wright, or just wait till we see?
I will do it at Joyce's pleasure. Y'all decide how you want to go.
Well, let me ask you, do any other Commissioners have questions for Mr. Wright at this time? I'll go ahead and let him answer those, and then we'll proceed on.
Start backing with him again. So what's the first one that I mentioned?
Well, we weren't sure if we needed a motion, because we're not sure if, at this point, whether we'll be able to vote like the Board does, or not. So I guess we're going to have to table that one. What we actually would like to have, like the Board of Supervisors, where when they vote, you know who voted for and who voted again. The only way we can do it right now is by show of hands. Yes, Nikki?
I'm sorry, I have just been given a signal by Mr. Schumaker that we are able to capture that.
Oh, okay, so we would be able to, or let's, sorry, so that answers that one. You're off the hook on that one, Ian.
You did good.
You did real good. Now, Joyce has two questions, and I'll let her ask you.
Okay. One, it says that we can be removed from, for, by the Board of Supervisors for malfeasance. I just want to know what malfeasance is, because...
A lot of cases, not a lot. Probably that is the wrong standard. It probably is the wrong standard for removal. I was sitting here getting ready to see if I could find, look at 15.2, 22.12, which really deals with the qualification, appointment, removal terms, and compensation of members of the local planning commission. Does say members may be removed for malfeasance. That's directly out of the code. And so that's a legal term, that's a... I would, I can write you a brief, I can bring you a whole lot of things, but to give you a two-minute answer to that, no. I can't do that. It's basically things, a member is doing things that are probably illegal or otherwise. It's not saying bad words, that wouldn't quite get it. It's not being obnoxious, that probably wouldn't get it. It gets beyond that level.
Second question?
Second question? And we had, in one part, we had talked about absences from meetings, attendance to meetings and absences. And it's not in the 2.2 that we have here. I didn't see it anywhere in the document that was online. And I was just wondering, is that going to be included?
That is provided in codes that notwithstanding, a member of the local planning commission may be removed from our office by the local governing body without limitation in the event that the Commissioner member is absent from any three consecutive meetings of the Commission or is optioned for any four meetings of the Commission within the 12-year month period. In such event, a successor shall be appointed, but that requires affirmative action by the Board of Supervisors.
Okay.
Okay, in other words, you can't say, "Okay, so-and-so's been absent three meetings, he's off." It doesn't work that way. That's going to take affirmative action by the Board of Supervisors to remove them.
Okay, but does that need to be in our bylaws, then?
It depends on your approach you want to take to your bylaws. There's nothing wrong with it being in there. There's nothing wrong with it not being in there.
But it's an action by the Board of Supervisors?
It's an action by the Board of Supervisors, just like the appointment and removal is an act by the Board of Superv... Y'all can't change your membership. Y'all, you can resign. But you can't say, "I don't want this person to be a member of the Board of Supervisors, I mean, be a member of the Planning Commission." You got to leave, and you vote six to one, or seven to one, or whatever it is. You can't vote somebody off the aisle.
I just had a question about 6-9, where it talks about the public statements, comments, and saying that we ask all speakers to keep what they, what they know, what they know to be the truth, keep too what they know to be the truth. And by signing up for a comment, you're acknowledging your understanding and agreement of above. And, and with regards to people making constructive, standing up there throwing out whatever they want to say, "Well, I heard it, and I think this is true." It's like, it's saying, "Don't stand up there and lie." But people tend to, "Oh, well, I thought it was true because I heard it from whoever." And so stuff gets thrown out there, there in our actual lives. I don't know how to avoid it. I just don't want people standing before me lying and perpetuating lies.
I'm going to start with the most. I have three wonderful children. I have five wonderful grandchildren. And if I could control who tells me little white lies or little fibs, I might have to be sitting here, maybe, might I even have to win the lottery? I don't think we have an answer that we can really say, I mean, other than saying, "Don't lie to us." How you enforce that gets to be pretty tough. And if they believe it's true, and they have some basis for believing it's true, they probably can say it. It's insulting to all of us. I mean, we've been in meetings, and as latest as the last Board of Supervisors meeting, where individuals are accused of being on the take, you know, the numbers are mentioned and all that. It's bordering pretty close when you get down to that part. But it, as far as the general run-of-the-mill comments, it's an awfully hard thing to enforce. All you do is encourage a high standard, truthful standard at least.
Okay.
Any other concerns that Mr. Wright can address for you in the bylaws?
Do you want us to take these, and Nikki and I, I guess we're volunteering, I'm volunteering Nikki, but I'll help her. Do you want us to take these in light of the comments we made tonight, any of the comments, and try to dress them up a little bit, or dress them down, or change them, and bring them in compliance for what we've heard tonight?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If you do that, is it possible for you to run a red line, so we could see exactly what's changed?
I like red lines, I really do.
I do too.
Happy to do that for you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that the consensus of the Commission, is to table this for now, till we get those changes, and then vote hopefully next month? Do you need a motion?
I just have a question before we move to that, and that's for Commissioner Kaposchinsky. While we're cleaning this up and putting our best efforts into making the bylaws exactly what they need to be, you had indicated something about adding the words to include that the official record included the video as well as the minutes. Do you want that to be?
I would, I think the...
Thing of that nature?
You know, the, I think the videos, because we have that technology, if you don't mind my answering, Mr. Chairman?
No, absolutely not, sure do.
I think the videos, because we have that technology, I think it's a great piece of technology. There are times when I go through the minutes myself, and I'll go back to the video to understand clearly, even to watch somebody's expression that can help me understand maybe the comment that was being made. However, I don't know, I don't know legally if you can make a video a part of a permanent document. That's a question, and I don't even know if it's worth it, given the fact that you said, as long as the context and the motion and the action are accurate, and that's really what we're voting on. I don't even know if it's necessary, but maybe your comment would help.
I would encourage not including video as a permanent record of the action of the Planning Commission. I would encourage you to continue to speak through your minutes, and make sure your minutes are correct.
All right, then I'll agree to that. Thank you.
Okay.
And the other part, we'll try to get this done in the next, say, two weeks, so we can get them to you. So you'll have a little bit, two weeks to think about them. And if you see some other things, get back with us, and we'll try to...
Well, Mr. Chairman, before we leave the subject in total, Ms. Gooden put forward a recommendation that we do something with regard to...
Code of Ethics.
Yeah, and as long as we're talking about the bylaws, I think it was a, I think it was a fine recommendation. I actually have no problem doing that. I would have difficulty adding two pages to a seven-page document to talk about that sort of thing. I do believe a statement is warranted, but I think it can be done in a sentence, and maybe even another sentence to talk about how we should respect each other. But, so, can we discuss that before we close?
Well, what I was going to suggest, because your statement didn't get into the package, is we'll give you time to study what Joyce has forwarded, and then get your statement into the package. And that'll give Mr. Wright and Ms. Nikki to look over and work it through, and then we can discuss it at that point.
Yeah, and by the way, there's no pride and penmanship here. I mean, if somebody wanted to change that particular sentence, I'm fine with that.
Right, on the same, right.
While we were talking about this, and I did not include it in the email, because I missed that, would you like for me to read the statement that, on the email, so that it's part of the minutes tonight?
I'd be fine, I'd be fine. I appreciate that, thank you.
Yes, sir. The statement with regard to Code of Conduct that Commissioner Kaposchinsky has offered is as follows. "With regard to conduct by all participant Commissioners on the Buckingham County Planning Commission, members will receive any and all individuals who approach the Commission and Commissioners equally and respectfully, and will give their full attention to such individual, and will consider fully each project and/or issue being presented fairly as it relates to the county and the Buckingham community, and without regard to the individual presenter's personal, cultural, economic, and/or social characteristics and/or attributes."
All right, thank you, Nikki.
Thank you.
And that will be part of the package for next month, September, as well as Joyce's two documents are in there also.
My question about either of those paths is, is this a nicety, or is there enforceability? Like, if someone breaks some of this Code of Conduct, will we treat violations punitively?
Well, I'm going to give this to Ian, but I would assume that that would be taken up by the Board of Supervisors, being that they have the final say, sir.
Among yourselves, you probably would, other than adopting a motion that we choose to sanction Planning Commissioner X because they violated the Code of Conduct, and if that passes, it would be a sanction. And impose a fine, you can't, cannot impose a fine. You can't kick them off, you can't banish them from meetings. So it is, it is against setting an ideal and other that calling out that they didn't meet the ideal, it really doesn't.
Yes, ma'am.
And one of the reasons, I had several reasons for introducing a Code of Conduct and Code of Ethics. And one of them is that the Board of Supervisors, as Code of Conduct, the school board has a Code of Conduct that they not only sign, everybody signs, and they post that on their website. And then we have a Code of Conduct for the meetings, and that we are imposing on our public speakers, what we expect them to do. And then when I ran into some, several things that I felt were not quite right... And then when I ran into some, several things that I felt were not quite right, and I was told, we don't have, it's not that it's enforceable, but we didn't have a code of ethics, we have no code of conduct, we're here and just kind of, y'all going to do right. And I've just not worked that way. And I've heard things come through this board that I'm like, "How did we do that? That just doesn't seem right." And somehow, I just want to be, rather than just saying, "I don't think it's right," it's like, "This really violates our code of conduct. This behavior does not, is not correct." And I just want to be able to speak to that. But I've worked in places where I've just had a code of conduct, and, and we're holding other people, but not ourselves. And I can't tell you what I said to Nikki earlier today about a code of conduct. You're going to hold somebody else accountable, but you're not.
Right.
We're not accountable.
I understand.
And when I went to the course in March, that was something they talk about, ethics, code of conduct, where are your bylaws, what, what are you operating by, that you can say, "This is what we, this is our goal that we're going to operate by," rather than say, "We just going to operate, and that's it, as we please." So I just wanted to, and, and it may not affect anything, but I can certainly give you instances of, and I have said it before, things that I thought we acted either in a sexist manner, we were biased, and, and it's like, how do we make that decision in some of the things? That I do feel that sometimes we do treat women differently when they are standing before us during a presentation, and if they're standing with a man, we treat them differently. So I've just seen some biases come up, and I, and we just need to be able to, you know, pull those things in when we act as a board.
Understand. Well, they, we will decide on that next month along.
Oh, that's.
You know, what we can do is modify it, incorporate them, maybe combine them, you know, whatever, to establish something. I don't think anyone, I don't believe anyone's opposed to, to that, so.
And as far as the length of them, and just lining it out specifically, you know, we're going to, this is what we're going to do. It's numbered, and as I mentioned in the letter, in the email to cover, email to Nikki, I think we can adapt it. And the code of ethics, and it says here, the code of ethics and code of conduct both have some identical points. One of the points that I'm concerned about is number seven in the code of, in the code of conduct, and then number ten in the code of ethics, we allow three minutes for public comments. I can see some people taking this point to mean they can talk as long as they plead, please, to present their views. It's saying the board can take however long they need to present their views. And so.
Right.
But again, being respectful about it, yeah.
What you're trying to achieve is a standard of.
A standard.
Of equals, that this commission operates under, parameters were given, and we try to do our best to, to achieve those. And I don't think, like I say, I don't think anyone has a problem with that, it's just a matter of trying to get it, you know, try to make it as precise and, and precise and concise.
Concise, yes, I agree. And one of the things I'll also say is that we're talking about a code of conduct. When I came to this board, it was like anybody speaking. And it was, and being cut across as far as people are, we weren't even cordial or respectful to each other as far as people speaking across each other. And I had to look at it, and it says, "Nobody speaks on the board without the permission of the chairman." And I figured I had to do that first before I could expect that from somebody else. And so I purposefully kept saying, "Mr. Chairman," and waiting for your acknowledgement, because just because I call your name does not give me permission to speak. I don't care what I have to say. So that's why I think sometimes it needs to be listed out.
Yes, I understand.
Thank you.
Right, appreciate it, Joyce. Any, anything else at this time? All right, we've sort of got a consensus, let's make sure everybody's fine. We're going to review all of this material for next month's meeting, and we'll see if we can congeal these two policies and make them very straightforward, and hopefully we can obtain what we, we set out as our goal. If that's all right, then I will, well, let me put it this way, any other commission matters, we'll close that out. Any other commissioners have anything? Do I have a motion adjourned then?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I've got two seconds.
Let him have it.
All right, so you need a vote. Any discussion? On all the favor, raise your right hand and vocal.
Mr. Kaposinski, yes.
Commissioner Cruz, yes.
Seigfried, yes.
Shoemaker, yes.
Gooden, yes.
Wise neighbors, yes.
Okay, we are adjourned.